I'd like to call over every meeting of the North Huntington Township's Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, October 18, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. or we'll call Mr. Turley.
Commissioner Harold.
Here.
Commissioner Higginson.
Here.
Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Fessenda.
Here.
Commissioner Casera.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here. Everybody please rise to your place and remain standing. For a review and parlay on senior call, it is Mr. Mearns as Saint Agnes Turley.
Oh God, source of all authority and wisdom in heaven and on earth, send your most holy spirit upon these public officials and citizens of North Huntington Township. Together we seek your divine assistance for the tasks that lie ahead of us. Inspire our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. They are commissioners, remember, but they are trusted servants as they seek to promote the common good and the wise use of community resources. Lord, may the citizens of North Huntington participate actively in the process, taking the time to study issues, thoughtfully sharing our points of view, and listening to the opinions of others respectfully. Everything we do and say at this meeting and the actions that will flow from these decisions give you honor and glory, we pray this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, and all God's people say.
Amen.
Anybody who'd like to speak tonight, please, it's time to focus the podium. Remember, tonight's meeting is being electronic recorded and video streamed. First gentleman is James Urban. You state your name and address for the record.
James Urban, 893 September Lane, North Huntington. Reason I came here tonight was to find out why I wasn't placed on the agenda for tonight. And I find out that I am. So should I wait?
You can wait until we discuss your plan. Next citizen is Tracy Cahill. State your name and address for record.
My name is Tracy Cahill. My address is 2021 Pier Street in North Huntington. I'm sure you remember, we came last month, I was here requesting the township to take responsibility to street that I live on, which is Pier Street. Because I'm a little heated, I did present evidence that demonstrated that the township has, for the last 25 years, taken responsibility and maintenance for that street. I presented that to you, and if you closed that meeting, a decision was made to send this to the solicitor for his review. Upon this one by, I heard nothing. I don't, the potholes haven't been fixed, nobody's called me, emailed me, asked me any questions, nothing, so I thought it was best that I come back today. With more evidence. I used the action line and reported the condition of my street on March 30th and April 4th. I did get a reply from Mr. Elbert. I do have those emails, and I have a copy for everyone. I'd like to give it to you, because in his response to my emails, he specifically states that he's going to repair my street. There's a lot of emails. The dates are highlighted, his responses are highlighted. And a copy of the first one, I did not have one for you, but I do have one this way. For you, and for Mr. Elbert. This way you have a copy of Elbert. Anyways, you'll see on those emails, he states that he will repair the potholes of my street. One of the emails goes towards him saying that he's aware of my street, the new condition, and then he didn't try to get, does it say there, he didn't try to get, he's unable to. But in that same paragraph, he states he will include Pier Street for asphalt repairs. Now I've got two emails from two different dates. If you look on page two of both of those emails, he has closed out the action report as resolved. Nothing is resolved. You can't even ride a bicycle without calling into a pothole on my street. Now let's start back at the beginning. He enters a community that this street is a private street. For 25 years, he maintained it. You put guardrails in, drainage, you plowed, salted, cut grass, had a street sweeper, you've done it. And now that I'm asking for potholes, where the street could be paved, can't be done. You just don't have responsibility after 25 years. I'm going to go back to Mr., I'm sorry if I cut off, Mr. Higginson.
Hi.
Your comment last month was, if you take on our street, it's going to open up a flood to the other 99 streets that are considered private roads. I have to challenge you on that. Has the township done the same things that you've done to my street for 25 years to all of those other private roads? Have you plowed those other roads? Have you cut these potholes on those other private roads? Have you plowed snow? Have you put guardrails in any of those other private roads? No, you have not. So to take my road as a public alley or a public road, you were afraid it would open up a floodgate to all the other private. I think differently, it would. You demonstrate 25 consecutive years, not just one year, city year, one year. There is a history here with this street that is not there with any of the other private roads. Any good litigator would use prior actions. In this case, I have to take this forward, and the reason why. When I bought my home in 1999, the township filled out the no lien letter stating that I was living on a public road. So with that in mind, my mortgage company did not require a private maintenance agreement. Now, that it is out there for everybody to know that it's supposedly a private road, if I go to sell my home, or if anybody goes to sell the home on Pier Street, and the buyer requires a mortgage, which they will, because every home on that street averages between 150 and probably 250,000, will require a mortgage. And as soon as they find out it's a private road, they're going to run. You know why? Because there's nobody that's going to have responsibility to maintain it. Now the value of my home has decreased. It has not increased because of that. Last month, you tried to say that my value of my home is worth more. It has not plummeted because I can't sell it, okay? How do I get a maintenance agreement? Well, the people that live on my street are retired schoolteacher, are retired marine. These people are in place state comes. How do I get them to sign a maintenance agreement and get money from them? Because my township doesn't want to do it now. So I'm here to, one, see where we are with the solicitor on this. Because I have to, in all good honesty, protect my interest and my neighbor's interest and take this to the next level if I can't get anything done here. Now, as I said last month, we're willing to work with you. We're not asking for our road to be widened. We're not asking for it to have yellow markings now in the center of it. We're happy with our eight-foot wide road. We're happy with that. We just want to be able to drive down it. So we'll take the status of a public alley very similar, very similar to an alley off of the next road from us, which is called Our Way, which is an alley also that you paved, that has three homes on it. And out of those three homes that are on it, two of them are worth probably a quarter million dollars or more. So I'm wondering who they knew to get that alley approved as a public alley. That is also listed on the official North Huntington Township map as a public alley. So all we're asking is for the same thing that those three homes call, public alley. So I'm here asking for that again, because I cannot stop in good conscience fighting this fight for a retired schoolteacher that unfortunately Mr. Elbert chose to get into an argument with, a widow's schoolteacher, and a retired marine that's approaching 90 years of age. We shovel these people's driveways so that they can get out. I'm not shoveling the road in case an ambulance needs to get down there for them. I need my township to do what they've been doing for 25 years. Fix the potholes, repave the road, do the right thing. If not, I will seek private counsel, and I will sue the township for this. And we don't want that, but I will do it. I have to do this for the people on my street. So a public alley isn't asking for much. You don't have to upgrade to meet the minimum standards of a street. We'll meet the minimum standards of an alley. That's all I can say tonight. Thank you for this.
Our next citizen would be Dawn Welcher. State your name and address for record.
My name is Dawn Wechler. My address is 1681 Fifth Avenue from Peaceport, PA. I am the owner of Sable Kennel. I am coming to you tonight to speak to you about Sable Kennel because it has come to my attention that I believe that nobody is aware that I'm here. I understand that you have recently signed a contract with Hawthorne Kennel to continue on as your dog animal control, or at least the next 12 months. But I want to explain to you who I am. I bought Sable Kennel, or I bought out Kennel Parade down from Peaceport in January of this past year. I have been operating as Sable Kennel since then. We have had $330 through my kennel since the beginning of the year. I am a no kill shelter. I have killed only four animals. I will only euthanize four extreme aggression and severe illness. Most dogs that come in are very fearful, they're not aggressive, they're fearful. I have another officer that works with me. Her name is Officer Jill Ernie. We work 24/7. Now, we are on call. We come out, your officers need us in the middle of the night, we're there to serve you. Basically, I want to let you know when a dog comes into our kennel, we're going to post that dog to our Facebook group so an owner has the opportunity to find their dog expediently. I will return phone calls at my earliest convenience. Example, before I walked in here, I had taken a dog in, taken it down to my kennel. My phone has run since I've been here. The owner is found. When I leave here tonight, I will return back to my kennel to release that dog to that owner. There is no waiting for the weekend to be over, for a holiday. I return dogs on holidays, because why should an owner have to worry about the welfare of their dog? I don't think that's something they should have to worry about. I have to go to the kennel anyhow to feed, water, walk them, clean their kennels, so I'm absolutely going to call an owner back and let them have their dogs back. Dogs get playtime in my kennel. You know, we will figure out if dogs are dog friendly. We will let them have playtime in our playroom. They get couch time. You know, we will take them out of kennel and spend some time with them, because that's who we are, that's the new way of the animal control. So I just wanted to present myself to you tonight to let you know that there is another alternative out here. And if you see that that you are going to have any next year, I would like the opportunity to bid on your contract. So I'm going to leave you with some business cards. If anybody has any questions, I will wait in line. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it for our citizen comment. Response to citizen input, the first one would be Tracy Cahill.
Yeah, I mean, I think last time, I don't want to speak for anyone on the board, but it was the words, we didn't really take the action on it. And I think mostly it was because it was a private street. Now, you're correct, I mean, you showed us some pictures, a document where maybe some more types of vehicles, ditch mounted, fixed potholes, or things of that nature. But that probably honestly wasn't correct in the first place, since it was a private alley, street. Just like any other developer would speak to, that roads have to make certain standards before the township can take it over. So if anything, I think the township's probably already done more than they should have, and that's why we're in this kind of gray area. So like I said last meeting, and I was hold true to that, if the residents that live on the street update the road to the township's standards, I'll be more than happy to take it over at that time.
So I've got to fix the road before you take the road. And what standards would I need to meet for an alley, a public alley?
I think you could talk to our engineering department and Andy, and they would be able to provide that information to you.
So I either spend the money to fix the road, or I spend the money to get an attorney to have you to be forced to do it. I mean, literally, it's one of the...
That's my opinion, I'm not going to speak for the board, but for me to be comfortable with my opinion for other township to take over the road, you should be treated just like any other developer or any other resident that will live in the area that wants their street or road taken over.
Mr. Cahill, in response to my emails back to you, we have done minimal maintenance over the years, along with winter maintenance. We've never denied you guys winter maintenance.
You should have, I guess.
For many of years, I mean, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. I guess you consider yourself lucky, because, you know, we weren't aware that this wasn't a public street, so...
So you weren't aware that it wasn't public, and I wasn't aware that it wasn't public. But now we're all going to suffer after the last 25 years, because now you think you're aware of it, even though your map shows that we are considered, the map shows we are a public street. That official roadmap shows we are a public street, but now you're changing it.
This is our turn to respond, okay, so.
I apologize.
That's okay.
But I believe, you know, we did the research, because there was more than initially, your neighbor had requested drainage, the whole street paved. There was issues with drainage, as I mentioned, that were coming off of Morris Avenue, and we had gotten engineering to do research on getting easements, appropriate easements, to be able to take care of the drainage issues. That's when I believe that we were, became aware that it was never adopted as a township street. I, you know, based on the fact that we have done some patching in the past, you know, I thought it would be okay to continue to do that. That's why I said that we would be doing that soon. Not to the magnitude of where you folks would like to have your street paved and so forth, but then I had denied it, because at this point, I'm not sure what to do with it. You know, when I get some answers, I'll be glad to, you know, patch it, pave it, drainage it, whatever I need to do. I'm just not sure what to do at this point.
Thank you. And I gave an opinion at last month's meeting, that it was our understanding after reviewing it, that it was a private street, not a public street. But I did indicate, based on the additional information that Mrs. Cahill brought forward, that I would do some additional research. You know, one of the things I wanted to look at was the fact that it was chipped and sealed, I think, one time, years ago, I wanted some confirmation of that, it wasn't there. But, but, you know, taking it at face value, it was done one time. I went back and did some additional research, looked it up with regard to formal acceptance versus, you know, sort of prescriptive acceptance. There was some literature that Mrs. Cahill brought forth on that. And nothing that I looked at changed my opinion that it remains a private roadway. We had done some, you know, sporadic maintenance on the road here and there, as Mr. Albert indicated, maybe that shouldn't have happened, but it did. If the township commissioners recall, and some of you weren't here at the time, a number of years ago, the township routinely provided winter maintenance to roads that were in development that weren't accepted by the township, because they anticipated that they would be accepted by the township. So they took on what was really the developers' responsibility, where other communities came in all around this area, put that responsibility on the developers until those roadways are accepted. Well, once we figured out that we were doing that, we changed that policy. And now, until the roadways are accepted, we don't do any more winter maintenance or any maintenance on the roadways. And that might be why things have changed with regard to your street too, because the policy of North Huntington Township changed in that they're not providing any maintenance on streets and roadways that have never been accepted.
Well, I submitted pictures to you last month that showed its worst. As of August, you were still street sweeping our street. August, it was street sweep, and in September, the North Huntington Township tracker cut down the weeds along our road. So they are still maintaining it as recently as the last 60 days. So when did it stop?
Yeah, I want to point out here that in March, Mr. Albert, you stated, we will include Pier Street for repairs soon. So as a resident, if you would tell me that, then I would assume that you're going to continue and possibly do some repairs, unless you call me and tell me otherwise. But on this work order, it says resolved. I don't see how this issue is even close to being resolved. April, you say we will include Pier Street for asphalt repairs. We are aware of the poor drainage on your street. A lot of water comes from state, more is happening. Again, this one is posted resolved, and there's no resolution.
Maybe I can add a comment. There were a couple of memos you received this year on this. Of course, there's a history of it, there was a study some years ago, there were issues with taking it over, bringing it to standards and so forth. And one of the reasons why you don't want to do minimal maintenance is what's happening here, is it's going to be used against you. Everybody lives on their private street, upgraded or taken over by the township. There are a lot of these, and you understand the issue, that we have to be careful. In the memo, we acknowledged that we had done some maintenance, some paddle poaching, and we did some winter maintenance. Probably shouldn't have done that, but we did. But I think it was minimal, it did occur a number of years. But in that memo, I recommended that we continue to do what we are doing, and that would include fixing some potholes, minimal maintenance, and not doing anything other than that. And nothing has changed over the last couple of months. This has gone up at several meetings, we got several calls about it, but nothing has changed. I think under the circumstances, we should continue to do minimal maintenance, including fixing the holes and the winter maintenance, realizing that that can be used against you the way it is now. But it's, you know, that's what we've done in recent years, and we think we should continue to do that, nothing more.
My position is writing resolve on a inter-office memo that does not talk to the citizen about their concerns is not effective.
I should have put dismissed instead of resolved, I'm sorry.
And it was on two of them, two of them, not just one, two, he has marked resolved.
My concern is you didn't contact the citizen. I mean, our citizens don't see that you're writing waiting, resolved. They don't know none of that.
I've been waiting...
They're still waiting to get something. If you tell them in a memo or in an email that they're going to be repaired soon, they're waiting for repairs.
I believe Mr. Turley and I were up there, and we didn't actually speak to Mrs. Cahill, but we spoke to the lady who was here last month. She was fully aware of our position on this.
She didn't make the request like I did. And telling her in person and not in writing is not properly addressing the situation.
Mrs. Cahill, that is good for everything, thank you.
Rich, what's the difference between resolved and dismissed? Well...
I mean, nothing is still done, I mean, what do you put dismissed and resolved?
Right, then we have two, two, you know, categories there, dismissed and resolved, and you can look at that either way. Resolved is more likely that something was done, and, you know, dismissed was, there was, you know, nothing done. You know, that's how I always look at it, and possibly I should have put dismissed on there instead of resolved.
If we dismiss it, do we contact the person within your request as far as the work order?
Not always, a lot of times, the girls in the office have always, they've called in the past, and it's supposed to residents, or residents call in and ask if there's any updates on it, and, you know, they can tell them what the updates are.
Rich, I believe there is also on the, whenever you make a complaint online, isn't there tracking, that you can go back in and check that?
Yes.
And what concerns me is that we've been taken care of for 25 years, we've taken it with the fuel money, and you said there was a no lien letter?
When I purchased my home in 1999, it's required by a mortgage company to, the settlement company, to request from the township that there's no liens against the property, and that it doesn't but a public road. And the response was that it doesn't but a public road. And that's why I was not required to get a maintenance agreement on that when I purchased it. Now I'm stuck, I'm stuck, I can't sell it. We're all stuck.
And I understand things changed, and some of our policies have changed, but... I don't know, I have a problem with this. That's all I'm going to say right now.
Mr. Cahill, you said that there's another road in the township that is a private alleyway?
Correct. It is, Pier Street runs parallel to Shaw Street.
Right.
Right off of Shaw Street has a little alley, and it's called Our Way. So it's just right behind us. And that is on your map as a public alley, and it has been paved. And it has three homes on it. All we're asking is to be, and it's just as wide as our road. It's just as wide as our road, it's an alleyway. But if they're receiving, you know, the designation as a public alley and getting maintenance and paid, we just want to say respect, that's all.
I think we've been receiving different fuels, like Commissioner Casera said. I think that's a problem there too, because I think that's a big no-no.
Thank you, thank you, I agree totally. That's why I brought it up.
Like I said to Meg a few minutes ago, I have a problem with a citizen that does not know whether something is in waiting status, resolved, or what on the work order. They're waiting for it, and we have a director tell them, tell them a citizen that it's going to be repaired soon. So that's a problem. So that's a problem.
Mr. Fessenda, I've also told people that, you know, we're gonna repair things soon, and the season's not over yet, so...
I can understand that, but...
Especially under the circumstances of what's going on here with this street. I'm not sure, like I said a few minutes ago, I'm not sure which direction to go. I'll pave the lady's driveway. If you don't, you give more people that say, "Pay for driveway," I'll do it.
I think they're just looking for minimal pothole repair. I think that's all they're looking for.
As I mentioned before in past meetings, we've gotten overwhelmed this year with the worst requests for asphalt because of the heavy rains, and everybody that caught water this year went to the parades and et cetera, et cetera. So yes, we are a little behind this year, but we're starting to catch up. And initially, when I looked at that, and I don't look at every request for a pothole patch, you know, I use a lot of the judgment of my guys whenever they go out there to repair things, and they know, you know, what they're supposed to do, what they're not supposed to do. But coincidentally, because of this situation, Mike and I did go out to Pier Street, and we didn't even think it was that bad compared to some of the other areas that were coming in that have damaged streets because of the rain or the past winters with putting treatment on. But it's not to say that it still can't get done this year, and we're still working on trying to get some of these, you know, work requests done for asphalt. Every time we think we're getting caught up, I get a list of new requests from UFC, Mr. Fessenda, so it's hard to keep caught up.
I understand that, but if you make a commitment and write it, that should be honored. That's my problem.
And we're still working on it.
Again, it's very important that it gets designated as a public alley so we can sell our homes. At a minimum, at a minimum, just so we can sell our homes.
I was up on that street last Sunday, and it is deplorable, but it's also a long street. And, I mean, to bring it up to township standards, that's a problem for you. And I don't know whether there's any other type of standards that it can be brought up to. I know there's some alleyways on the Haven project coming up for next year. There are alleyways. I'm new at this, so I really don't know, but I think it's something that I would like to see the board look into.
I understand everybody's issue, but I do have an issue, and I can say that in this attitude because it's private. And that's my main concern, because we have so many streets around here that are private that we do not take care of. Now, unfortunately or fortunately, you benefited over the years them going out, doing your potholes for you and doing whatever, which is a benefit to you. But the other streets that are private has citizens on it. I don't believe we've ever taken care of those streets. So that's bad. That's bad for us.
The people that moved on to those private streets knew that when they moved on there. Unfortunately, I was not, I was thought it was not private.
I can't, back that many years ago, I can't, I can't address that. I wasn't around or anything like that, so...
You haven't given documentation from the settlement company.
But all I can say is, as far as I'm concerned, I do, I don't have a problem with 20 St. Anne. Look, we have a lot of different things. But from my point of view, I say just drop the road, you know, that's my view. If you want to go out there and patch a couple of potholes that are out there right now, or you don't, that's just where I'm at. I think we should not be taking over anything that's private right now at this point. And I, trust me, I like to take care of the citizens of this township, and if we take care of one, we gotta take care of them all. And I don't know if we can afford to do that on a regular basis, so that's where I'm staying.
What do we do about the money that just accepted from the state, the municipal fuel program that it's entitled to? Are we gonna repay the state for that? Or I'll just let my attorney take care of that? Vince can answer it to the attorney. I have to take this forward.
I understand.
I have no choice.
I understand, but that's where I'm at. Good. Okay. Thank you very much. The next citizen is with Don Belfer from Sable. I think, thank you very much for coming up here and talking to us. I believe that you're beginning of the year, or when is it? I'm not sure when we get to Campbell.
I think it's last month.
Last month. Next year, whenever it comes up in August or something like that. If somebody wants to contact you, you can go up here and bid on the contract that we have right now. Okay? Thank you very much. If that's it for a response to citizen input, the next item on agenda is approval of minutes for a special meeting in September 14, 2017.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it seven to zero. Approval of the minutes for a regular meeting on September 20, 2017.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Amen and bills.
Make a motion and pay voucher number 074959 through voucher number 075055.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to talk about a voucher number 074962, which is the second payment for Liberoni. On Woodall Street, we have an incident where in May, Liberoni cracked a driveway. Liberoni has not gotten back to the homeowners since May to repair the driveway. Bob Robinson has made several attempts to get them to repair it, and I've seen the emails he sent. I don't believe he's even gotten a reply that I know.
Yes, there was a reply. There was a reply yesterday or today. So I think it said that they tried to get in touch with the owners. They weren't home. And, but they're planning on doing it as soon as they can. Are they away? Maybe they're away.
Yes, they're away.
Well, they didn't want to wait till they're back. So the emails have said they fully understand they have to do this, and they're prepared to do it. They just couldn't be in touch with the owners.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with that then, but I'm looking for it to be repaired by the end of the month. So I hope they can get it. All right? Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it seven to zero. Staff reports, public works report. Anybody have any questions or anything for Mr. Albert? Mr. Albert, you have your take for your order.
I have nothing more to add.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Recreation Report. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller? Dan, welcome back. Do you have anything for commissioners?
Thank you. Happy to report I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Police Report. First one, emergency manager report. Anybody have anything for the department? Okay, Police Report. Lieutenant Mahinsky. Anybody have anything for Lieutenant Mahinsky?
Yes, I have a question for Lieutenant Mahinsky and Mr. Miller. How is the situation at Hilltop? Or Hunter and Lager?
Probably this week, I'm going down, going for a walk, get in the woods, and post all the stands, give them five days to remove. If they don't remove, then we're gonna have to make some sort of arrangements to remove them.
Do we have any plans to visit the general?
We don't know exactly who owns it. We've never caught anybody. And last year, the game commission caught the one guy. They cited him because he was hunting, I believe, without a license. And he didn't claim ownership to the stand. We took two down last year, and nobody to this day has come forward to say that we have their stand. It's gonna be out and back. So they're still sitting up at O Hall Park.
Did you have any luck with the Facebook post?
No.
Only because Commissioner Fessenda addressed me as well. I have nothing more to add, other than I think you are aware that Lieutenant Mahinsky and myself, along with Ryan Fonzey from the Department of Planning and Zoning, went down and GPSed the questionable locations of the illegal tree stands. I won't say illegal, but the off-property tree stands. And they are clearly posted on our property, so I believe that's why the acting chief, Mahinsky, is going to be not on a post-notice.
Thank you. Right, you have anything for the board?
Yeah, I have one thing for the board, and probably should have came under announcements, is that on October 28, we are again participating in the take-back drug initiative down in the lobby of the police station. Officer Aaron is handling that. And the only thing, we will not accept needles, syringes, sharps, or EpiPads. The only thing that we will not accept this year.
Thank you, sir. Anything else to present to you?
No, sir.
Planning and Engineering Report. Fire Official Report. Anybody have any questions on that? No. Subdivision Land Development Application Report. Mr. Blanton.
There are two resolutions for your consideration tonight. First one involves subdivision 18 of 2010, 17, the Lincoln Hills and Raski Plan.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
O.
Roll call, man.
Commissioner Harold?
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson?
No.
Commissioner Bertani?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Commissioner Fessenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Casera?
No. Go change it.
Commissioner Martino?
Yes.
Motion's bell, four to three.
Hey, you have one question. This is the one with the...
Okay.
Sorry, that's where I was confused. That's all, yes.
Second one is the Idell WSAJT Lot Consolidation at subdivision 19 of 2017.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it seven to zero.
There is another item for discussion. That is subdivision 17 of 2017, the James Urban Plan, for discussion at the work session last week. I had not prepared a resolution for that. I was directed to go back to the applicant and get a stormwater management plan for that subdivision. So there is not a prepared resolution, Mr. Miller.
We have Mr. Urban. Would you like to speak?
Yes, the last meeting...
You can stick with Dave and Andy, please.
James Urban, 93, September 9, North Tynan. The last meeting, it was approved. Motion carried seven to zero. I had three things that they wanted me to do. I took care of all those items, and I know why the stormwater management is coming up now after it's been approved. So that's what I stand right now.
Mr. Urban, did that come up at the meeting, like stormwater management?
It did, yeah. It did come up at the meeting, and it was discussed, and the commission agreed that it wasn't needed. So they gave me the three items that I needed to take care of, and now stormwater management's back on the table. So I'm not sure. I'll have to put it back on the table.
Why is that, Andy? Why is it back on the table? Why, if it was addressed, then it was no issue to the planning commission?
It wasn't addressed. Yes, it was.
I have a meeting minutes right here.
I was there. It was addressed. He offered, but he didn't.
And the commission looked at the map, and there was no issue at all.
I told you last week, there's 35,000 square feet of impervious area now. With the addition of another home and an extension of the road, there will be over an acre of impervious. That's because of flooding. Planning commissioners recommend anybody own.
Those numbers are wrong.
It's your decision whether you choose to approve it or not approve it. Every one of you has some flooding following your work. And flooding is caused by impervious area and a lack of stormwater management.
Those numbers are wrong. Respectability.
I think too, I mean, we asked Andy to break things to our attention that might draw concerns to the township, and I believe he's doing so by doing this, and that's why I was gonna put it on for approval. I know the planning commission maybe, you know, recommended approval, but we want things to be called out to us to don't bite us like maybe it has before in the recent past. I would like to see some type of stormwater management program, you know, put in place.
I understand that completely, and I actually brought it up to do it, and, you know...
Yeah, you're next to him. What's he was asking?
This is just wasting my time and everybody else's time now by putting it back on the table.
I gotta agree with Mr. Blanca. And Mr. Haye said, you know, and this year's been unusually wet with the amount of rain that has created numerous problems across township. This is the time to address it. So it may, you may do what you want to do, and it may not be a problem for 20, 25, 50 years. It's that one day that it isn't issued, then it turns into a total debacle. So just because, and this, like you might, I'm still prepared with this myself, and I understand what the planning commission said, and, you know, we have a zoning hearing board as well. Not everything comes out of those two boards as the verbatim answer, which is why it comes to us and why it's vetted through Mr. Blanca. So based on the history of what has happened this past summer, I totally agree it needs to be relooked at, and there probably does need to be some stormwater management.
At that meeting, Mr. Blanca did bring up stormwater management, and the planning commission didn't see it was being a problem. So there's two different tales here, so to speak. Mr. Urban, what's your closest resident to where you live?
The closest building would probably be the Gun Club, which is about a quarter mile away. You know, just curious, what steps would I have to go through for stormwater management? I mean, how long would this take, and, you know, what would I have to go through to do this? Is this just something for my home? Do I have to, you know, I'm not sure what I'm...
Can you be putting on a drawing and address it?
I think it would make more sense to try and do something collectively for all four homes. It would be more accurate than trying to do four separate plans.
Oh, that's...
The road itself is a significant piece of the impervious area. It's 730 feet long by 12, 12 and a half feet wide, so that's 9,000 some square feet right there. If you addressed each home, you're still not addressing the road. I think you could do something very easily down at the dip in the road where it crosses the stream. You've already got a gutter line at the road. You've already got pipes underneath the driveways. It doesn't seem to me would be a difficult or terribly burdensome task to do some type of a shallow detention point down right next to the stream.
The only thing we have here is where the new home is proposed to go, it doesn't fall in that, it slopes the other direction. It doesn't cross, the water doesn't cross past the other three homes on the property. So we're only talking about the one home. The other homes on that property. So, you know, it's a big difference to take care of one home versus all of them.
I don't disagree, but the ordinance says when there's 5,000 square feet of impervious or more, you need to address stormwater runoff.
I'm not putting more than 5,000. It's gravel.
It appeared to me that there would be 5,000 square feet or more just in the extension of the road with the cul-de-sac you drew.
The road's already in place.
Not the extension to reach the fourth home.
Yes, it is. It's, I mean, it's been grown over. There's grass over it, but there's already a road cut in place. The excavation's... The excavation's finished.
What am I seeing right here? Proposed 20-foot main and cul-de-sac.
It's the cul-de-sac, the road is already in place.
I didn't see that when I was out there.
Well, you said the road was in place, but it was grown over with grass in that. It's not paved, correct?
It's not paved. I don't plan on paving. It's going to keep gravel. When we, when I did this 18 years ago, it was all gravel and we just haven't used it. And at the end of where that cul-de-sac is, everything slopes the other direction. So the house is going to be past the cul-de-sac and it doesn't flow past the other four homes. There's literally hundreds of acres around there. It's, uh, it's all wooded. So for me to build something for that one home as far as stormwater management, that's not an issue at all. But for me to take care of the entire street, that's, that's a big number. And you have to wonder if it's worth it or not.
Andy?
Underneath the, uh, the grown-over part of that, that road before there's a cul-de-sac, is it gravel under there already?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Urban, we've had a lot of heavy rains this summer. Has there been an issue down here with flooding or anything in that area?
Never, not for the past 18 years.
Andy?
Andy, it's true that there's gravel under that grown-over portion and only the cul-de-sac needs to be put in. Would that change your opinion at all?
Hey, this is all new information to me tonight, that there's one already road there. B, that it's not going to be paved. And C, that the house and the road will drain into the backside of the hill. I don't have enough information to evaluate that.
Okay.
This was all addressed at the last commission meeting? I'm sorry.
When you say commission, you mean, you mean board commissioners?
My name off those second night. Committee commission. Okay, I don't believe we're going to resolve it here. I think, I think you're going to have to deal with Andy or whoever to sit down and try to figure this out before coming back to the board. Because we can't resolve it here. Because it's just a discussion. Andy can look at it and look at the new information you got and go from there.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'll ask you in a minute.
Okay, um, next I want to attend is Solicitor Report, Mr. Ellington.
Thank you. There are no action items on the Solicitor's report for this month, but I do have a couple of additional items I want to comment on. Mr. Gray brought to my attention on the Lincoln Hills and Draskic Plan. There were actually two proposed resolutions in your packet and motion, a resolution approving and a motion, a resolution denying the plan. There was a motion to approve the plan and a second to the motion to approve the plan. That motion failed, so the plan is not approved. There's also a resolution to deny the plan. That hasn't been acted on. So if it's the commission's desire to actually deny the plan, that will require action. With regard to the urban plan, is there any caucus running on that, Andy?
Uh, well, of course, there's a caucus running, but this is the first month it's been considered.
Okay. So that answers that question. That's all I have. So if the commission wants to address the resolution of denial, they would have to do that separately.
Mr. Charlie, is the board aware that there was a new subdivision plan received yesterday? And that there was a field meeting that agreed that a 10-foot berm was adequate? And that there was a new resolution prepared yesterday?
That should have went in an email yesterday. This all happened so late.
Last bit.
I can't say that everybody saw the email. We haven't really discussed it. So there was a meeting yesterday and I believe I put in the email that this would be... The pond matter was separated out from the subdivision because there were a few issues. We didn't think we'd, I don't know if they were big issues. There were a few issues that we needed to resolve. I think they would have been resolved by today. So the, the critical item was the subdivision, which is the lot line. Just a simple lot line change. And, uh, the, the only matter there was that we had required, or requires a 15-foot no-grading area toward the lot line in the pond. And the plan had provided six. And, um, RWS was out there yesterday and agreed to 10. And we had some discussion and our, our feeling was, well, it didn't meet the ordinance where we felt that we could work with it. So that was brought as an exception. So it would be to provide, or we could get a truck through there. We ended up making this essentially. So it didn't meet the 15 feet, but it meant, it doesn't, it doesn't, there's no takeover of the pond yet. That's going to have to be brought back to you later. So it's really a lot line revision to enable 10 feet of space between pond and property line. I don't know how clear it was yesterday. It was a slew of emails and things regarding the agenda yesterday. And I was just very late, so, but we just had that chance to discuss it until it came up.
So there's more to follow on this? Is that what I'm hearing? You want to say something?
What's before you is the subdivision? What was before you is the subdivision plan itself? The pond, uh, is, is going to be addressed separately?
I was not aware of that. I thought we were talking about what we saw last Thursday night.
Yeah, I think that, that changed. Go ahead, Bob. Name the average.
Well, shoot, 8958 Hill Drive. All I'm asking here is a lot line change. So I started at this five foot. We thought, we looked at the ordinance and said 10-foot high, five foot. So we put it on there. I didn't care if it was 10 feet. I didn't care if it was 15 foot. I met with everybody yesterday and they said 10 feet. So I went up, I had all these new drawings made up. It's not 15 feet. I don't really care. All I want to know is, how many times do I have to think of these things? It's not going to make any difference to us. But if they are set at 10 foot, I don't think we have a problem. I understand this isn't for you guys to take this pond over. This has changed the lot lines. But I give best for and Draskic's proper property more than any reason. Otherwise, I just don't ask for it to be dedicated. Hope you didn't take it to voting on the takeover of the pond, you don't.
I think this is an issue that happens when things change between the work session and now. And we, there's no real time. This just happened late yesterday. In fact, we didn't get the drawings till about 3:30 yesterday. So we tried to get an email to you and I didn't realize it wasn't clear to you. But I've always been concerned with last-minute changes to the agenda. And we had several yesterday tying us up, this being one. So what's before you today, like Bob says, not exactly what was before you last Thursday?
I tried to appease everybody one day, one of them. I spent the whole day yesterday running back and forth with engineers. I made three trips to Tri-County Engineering and yes, I was at 3:30. But Bob Robinson called me and I told him I'm going to do it. And he was fine with that. He said something about seeding over there. I had to have done an hour and a half after I talked to you guys. Did you get my question on that, Mr. or Bob?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot by revision. It's in front of you. It's a subdivision lot by revision. The pond's going to be addressed.
Everybody, you don't have to get loaded on your free time.
So last Thursday, the meeting that was scheduled at 11:30, whatever day, Tuesday after the staff meeting, that occurred, but you didn't discuss the issue that we believe you were discussing at that point?
I don't know. But I discussed with them everything that was, there were three items, I believe, in the email. One was about the pond wasn't filled in. I went over the next morning, 6:30 morning, and I got four trucks, an excavator, and a hivet and filled that pond in. So that was no issue. The other issue was when we were out there, that we did not have it seeded in mulch. Well, actually, we did have it seeded. I don't think, we didn't do that with mulch on it. But as soon as it was left, within an hour and a half, it was mulch. So that part is done. We talked about the fabricing back. This was one of the emails I sent him and asked us not to be going on that. And that's why he wanted, instead of six feet, 10 feet, so he would have to take a small machine or whatever to clean up. So we addressed everything, addressed it immediately, as we always try to do. Everything that we talked about that night is done.
Rich, you agree?
Yes.
Bob's not here, but you were present at the meeting.
I was present and, Mr. Schuster, everything that Bob had asked him to do, he agreed to do it. From my understanding, it has been completed.
I was in agreement with this. The issue with the details of the pond, there aren't an issue because we're not addressing the pond now. So this was a way to separate them out. I probably should have explained this when this came up. We did send out an email, which was about flurry of things, like I said, just the day before meeting. It's a problem. We try to hold fast to our agendas from Friday, but people would like action quickly and this was a problem. So I don't, apparently it wasn't clear to the board what we were voting on.
So there were two motions, two resolutions in the board?
There's a third resolution.
What's that?
There's a third resolution which I prepared yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
Andy, the, the third resolution that you appeared, is it one of the two?
It's one.
Well, then...
Let me get it from Julian and I'll read it into the record.
Commissioner Harold, what motion did you, I mean, you made a motion to approve. Apparently there's some confusion about achieving motion.
I think it was a lot line.
Resolution.
I think it was a lot line.
Okay, not the one that says deny.
No.
Right. We did the one for a lot line, but we denied it.
Right. Okay. So what's the third one?
The third resolution says that subdivision 18 of 2017, the Andrasik-Lincoln Hills Plan, to adjust boundary lines between three existing parcels in the Lincoln Hills 7 and 8 Plans is approved this date with their conditions. The revised parcels will be lot 7332R, 1.243 acres, lot 2-R, 2.287 acres, and lot E-1R, 3.497 acres. This resolution also grants the following specific modifications requested by the applicant. Number one, access path on the east side of the detention pond will be 10 feet wide rather than 15 feet as required by ordinance, Stormwater Management Ordinance 2011, Section 402B2T.
What I noticed, sorry, Richard, I was just going to say, when, when would we see that one?
Well, this is what I did yesterday afternoon, what, 3:30, quarter to four? I don't know if it went out electronically or certainly there wasn't time to get it out in a paper format. In essence, it's the same as the approval resolution, new lot sizes because the lot line changed and the modification to allow a 10-foot perimeter instead of a 15-foot, which I'm told was agreed to yesterday morning at a field meeting.
Andy, the only lot I see that changed when I followed your reading of that was lot 2-R from 2.310 acres to 2.287 acres.
There should be two that changed, correct?
Okay.
If I've got that wrong, I can run back and fix it. The last one, E-1R, went from 3.475 to 3.497. And lot 2-R went from 2.310 to 2.287.
Right, I heard that one.
The first lot didn't change.
So it does appear that there was some confusion on what the board was voting on. So there's the original motion to approve without the additional language that Andy talked about, but then there's the updated resolution with the additional language. Is that the one you're recommending, Andy?
Correct.
Mr. Schuster, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with it. It's just a matter of changing lines. This isn't, you're not taking anything. And I think maybe that's what... Can I ask, is that what the confusion was? You thought you were taking this pond right now?
Yes.
I don't know if it was that. I think it probably should have been two different, um, items on the agenda. One for the detention pond, the other one for the lot line.
We're going to address the detention pond. I was advised yesterday that what we should do is then ask for it to be dedicated and brought in.
Correct.
I would like a couple of questions answered before I go and waste my time and money while we're doing all this. Even if I can send this to you or whatever, showing what we're proposing to dedicate, if you don't like it, we'll fix it. I don't want to come in here and waste your time. I've done these things three times and I'm not blaming anybody for it. I didn't know that they wanted 10-foot in the beginning. We put, the engineer put 6-foot. So then I heard about it. And I never, me and Don Taroski, who's my partner in that, I never cared. I mean, if you didn't take it, it's not a big deal. It's an additional four foot. Once we get this to, for dedication, maybe I should come and present this to you guys so that you know what I'm doing. And I would really appreciate that you commissioners would take the time that two of them already did and Mike was out there to look at that and make sure. I'll do whatever you want me to do. I just don't want to come in here and you say no. If this is the way you want it, then that's what we're going to do.
So, uh, the options are to consider the original lot line resolution, which does not contain the additional language that Andy just read, or to consider the revised lot line, uh, resolution, which contains the language that Andy just read and revises the lots from lot 7332-R, remaining at 1.243 acres, lot 2-R, changing from 2.310 acres to 2.287 acres, and lot E-1R, from 3.475 to 3.497. That's the resolution that Andy's recommending be approved and that's the resolution that Mr. Schuster has indicated that he's satisfied with as well.
And that's the resolution that should have been in our hope instead of the other two?
That's correct.
I'll admit...
Resolution wasn't done until 24 hours ago.
I have a question here about, you're saying that's the only thing that changed, but what about Andrasic's property? Is that to have to be addressed or that's fine?
I don't think anything changed from that, did it?
Size, a little bit minor, not enough to be concerned about. Do you want to draw?
I have it.
It's not 1.243 acres. I don't want to be the poor ones.
Just to order it right on this page, we'll have that.
Hey, you want to come over here and take a look at the numbers? 1.243, that's the drawn in October 2nd. 1.243, that's the drawn in October 17th.
So it's the same. So, Mr. President, to entertain that, uh, resolution that it makes to the packet, uh, motion.
Make a motion, we add the updated resolution to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have. Andy, you need to read that revised... You need to read that, read that revised resolution. Because all we do is add it to the agenda.
Okay, from the top. And now it is resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town Circuit of North Huntington County, Westmoreland and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as follows. Subdivision 18 of 2017, the Andrasik... Subdivision eighteen of two thousand seventeen, the Andrasik Lincoln Hills Plan to adjust boundary lines between three existing parcels in the Lincoln Hills seven and eight plans is approved this date with their conditions. The revised parcels will be lot seven three three two R, one point two four three acres, lot two R, two point two eight seven acres, and lot E one R, three point four nine seven acres. This resolution also grants the specific, excuse me, the following specific modifications requested by the applicant. Number one, access path on the east side of the detention pond will be ten feet wide rather than fifteen feet, as required by the ordinance, parentheses, Stormwater Management Ordinance number two zero one one, comma, section four oh two, period B, period two, period T, end parentheses. It's all been enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of North Huntington County of Westmoreland and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, present the eighteenth day of October two thousand seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion. Andy, does this meet your requirements? Your, are you comfortable with this?
I, I would prefer twelve to fifteen feet, but I understand that Rich Albert and Bob Robinson both looked at it and agreed that ten feet was adequate.
Rich, you're comfortable with it?
I feel comfortable with the ten feet, um, based on the minor maintenance that we do reform in, in our ponds. Um, ten feet would be adequate. Um, you know, if there was any major maintenance that needed to be done, reprofiling or et cetera, um, we wouldn't have an issue with, you know, with the equipment being a pond. That wouldn't be an issue on the farm.
Ten feet, and it's with the roadway length, so I mean, I don't know how much more you need in that.
Andy, does this take the detention pond totally off everybody's property with these lines?
We won't know that until we see an as-built, because the as-built that we saw last week showed, uh, we, you know, we're on doing a joint property. So there'll have to be another as-built drawing.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero. Mr. President? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Township Manager's report, Mr. Curley.
First item is the action to approve the September check register.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero.
Second item is the September two thousand and seventeen budget report. Item three is an action to approve the Westmoreland County Transit Authority Agreement for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero.
Item four is an action to waive the zoning fee of twenty-five dollars for replacement of a storage shed at Straw Punkt Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero.
Item five is action to hire Michael Greer at a starting rate of twenty-six dollars and thirty-three cents for a mechanic's position at the Department of Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero.
Item six is action to approve a request for change order one from Go Long Incorporated to grind rust and repaint existing columns at the townhouse in the amount of two thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero.
Item seven is an action to adopt a five-year road plan, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Only one other discussion on this, I think, if I remember correctly, we're gonna try to revisit this, um, another two years, so it'll be kind of a, we're only in two years, but maybe adopt some of the current, maybe three years of the first one, pull that into a new one.
That's correct. Oh, so it's a five-year plan, but we're gonna update, review it, uh, every, the plan is every two years, ju- just because of data, it can be dated in three or four years, yes?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it seven zero.
Item eight is a discussion item concerning the police K nine.
Any discussions on that? Mr. Mahinsky did give us a memo discussing.
I, I agree with Mr. Mahinsky, Lieutenant Mahinsky's, uh, conclusions from the memo that there's still a, a number of unresolved issues that need to be worked out. Um, I think the board can decide on this, on this matter.
I've got some questions. Go ahead, Darryl.
The first issue about the car, I believe that's been resolved. Uh, we've got the Crown Victoria, we have a cage, um, a new dog, you put into that Victoria, and I talked to Officer Wardman, and he's agreed to drive that car for one year. Then for the two thousand nineteen budget, we've budgeted a new vehicle, a S U V, Oriam, or K nine.
Rod, is that included in it, for that cage? Is it cold right now for the dog and everything? You know, to keep it cold when it's hot? I don't know what they call that now.
Yeah, hot, hot pocket, uh, hot, hot bop, or something like that. That's what it's called, Justin, hot bopper, yeah. I don't know, is that still on the car? Or was it taken off and transferred?
Of the, uh, old K nine cars?
About the K nine car.
Uh, I don't know, I, I.
I don't know either, but, I mean, that's a minimal expense that probably could be ordered to get within a month.
It's really not a factor right now. It wouldn't be a factor until next summer.
Yeah, till, till summertime, till we get it in to get it installed.
There should be, what, two more cages down here and everything for, there is three.
Well, I, I, I really don't know what's down there because that was before me, that was all gone before me.
Because it was taken out of three complete used cars for new.
Right, right. I know, it's pretty much cheap. I do believe some of that stuff was thrown away at some point. I mean, I don't, I don't know what was or what wasn't thrown away.
Why would they throw it away?
I have no idea.
Rich, in the Mahinsky, on the number one here, it does say that, uh, the system, the monitor's temperature and that, the cost would be over a thousand dollars to equip the vehicle.
Yeah, that would be correct. I mean, I wasn't sure that we still had it, or whether we transferred it from the Crown Vic over to the current explorers, for the two K nine officers now.
Okay, and I, I would feel that would even be important in the wintertime, in case the heat was left on in the car, or any unattended time, that would work with the heat and the air conditioning.
ASAP, get it ordered and get it put on the car.
So you are, you are saying that there are kennels available on the old Crown Vic?
Correct. Anything, uh, Justin went down, dug one out, and the only thing he asks before it's installed is he gets an opportunity to scrub it down, and, you know, basically clean it up, make sure it's disinfected and everything for his dog, so that we don't have any issues. And I agree with him a hundred percent on that.
Absolutely. Um, the, the, the third issue you wrote about the ownership of the dog, I believe in the past we've had K nine officers that have owned their, owned the animals and, uh, the dogs, and they lease them to the township with a lease agreement. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. What they do is they, the township actually purchases the vehicle, the dog for a nominal fee, usually a dollar, and then when the dog's either retired or the officer retired, and he desires to take the dog with him, he then repurchases it back off the township, uh, for, for a nominal fee. Usually, whatever the township pays, he just returns. It's, it's, uh, back for it.
Is that just a practice, or is there a writing that says that?
There's an agreement, correct?
There's an agreement somewhere. I mean, I have to.
That's way back. I, I, I wouldn't want that. I wouldn't want that in an agreement.
So that, that, that could definitely be something to be done with this, this.
Yes, yes.
All right, um, and, uh, so, i- if, if Officer Wardman was to start, say, November through the rest of the year, what, what type of costs are we, we potentially looking at there for the last two years?
Well, the overtime cost, because they get a half an hour overtime every day, uh, for care of the dog, uh, if it would be November the first, you'd be looking at about eighteen hundred, between eighteen and nineteen hundred dollars for the remainder of the year. And we've already modified the current budget, uh, the, the proposed budget to include these, these in the budget.
In, in, in the budget for eighteen?
Two thousand and eighteen, correct.
Okay, um, have you had a chance to look through that, at the current, the current budget where we're sitting at this point?
Yes.
And, do you see, I, I, I did as well, and, and, you know, I looked at the K nine compensation, and I believe we're sitting at thirty-five or forty percent.
Sorry.
Of, of what was allotted.
Sure, correct.
Um, do you see any reasons why money cannot be allocated to, to start them soon?
As, as long as we move money from like one category to another, yeah, it's there, uh, any, pending any major disaster which none of us can say is gonna happen or will happen, I mean, yeah, I don't see where there's an issue on money at this point, as long as it's transferred from one category to another category.
Okay, so, my take on it is, is, so, the township has basically received the dog donated to, and received the training donated to, roughly a cost of fourteen thousand dollars that was donated.
Yeah, last, Officer Ward's dog, the cost was fourteen thousand, three hundred, which we had reimbursed to the township by Westmore County District Attorney John Beck.
So that, that was.
Drug, excuse me, drug.
Yeah, drug, drug forfeiture money.
So, so that, so we're already ahead in that aspect?
Correct.
We're probably just a stretch. From what I'm hearing, we have the equipment that we need to outfit that vehicle for it to use, that it's going to use through next year until two thousand and nineteen.
Correct.
Okay, so, the way, I, I, the way I look at this is, we have an opportunity here that was given to us by donations to the township, to put another narcotics dog on the road, and deal with, and help deal with this issue that we have. I, I think, uh, I don't see any reasons why, based on what I've seen in the budget, and using the access that's entered in the budget the last couple of years, and the minimal cost is gonna be in those three months that we wouldn't want to start, start getting out, or have ready to go, or let it go now. And, and what's our business on it?
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to give us an opportunity to make sure the car is put together, uh, and everything. I would recommend November the fifteenth, would probably be more than that, it'd give us a month, basically, to get the car together, give it an opportunity to clean and get it disinfected, and anything else, we gotta get some markings on the car, uh, as far as K nine, uh, heat back, the normal warnings that are put on the car, those all have to be ordered and put on the car, too.
Another concern I would have in there, too, is, is the dog has, the dog has been trained certificed, right?
Correct, it has full certification already, it has both, uh, patrol utility and a part of it.
Okay, so, and, and, and one of the other issues in there, just maintenance training, but, but, but another concern would be the dog sitting idle for two months. I, I don't even possibly need that, you know, I would think, I'm not a dog handler, I know that, but I would think that would probably be something you'd want to do, just have the dog sit idle for two months. So I, I'm agreeing with, um, uh, November fifteenth, start them in, in November, given them the, the later that time to be on the road by November fifteenth, get everything in order. Uh, at this point, I, I would, unless there's any other discussion.
Any other discussion on this? Yeah, I have a few things. Uh, as far as agreement, like your solicitor stated, as far as the purchase of the dog and that, I, I thought her, this is a unique situation. Uh, I think the last one that it happened to was with Bruce Keffer, and he was already in the program. So the time that he spent training his dog and that was kind of already included in that whenever we took the dog over. So, uh, couple of things I'd like to see in agreement is, besides the, I'd like to see the purchase of the, the dog, ownership by the township, and reverse our ownership purchase when the township deems necessary, like if, uh, the dog become older and unusable, or Justin will leave, or, you know, if they become a part of us, and, you know, he should be able to keep his dog. Um, also, uh, I think in agreement, we, we, because this is unique, the officer will not receive any reimbursement for any cost prior to the placement of the K nine into the program, uh, i.e. training time, equipment, original purchase of the dog, or any and all cost, uh, or time prior to it being put into the program. Uh, also, due to consistency within the K nine unit and the liability, the handler and dog will utilize the trainer appointed by the Chief of Police Service as Nick. The trainer now in place will certify K nine prior to placement into and during usage in the unit. So that it's all consistent with the three dogs, we don't go to court, and this dog's trained by this guy, and this dog's trained by that guy. Also, we brought up as far as, um, some dog food was gonna be donated, the grooming donated, so I think we need to look at the stipend that he receives for that. The only other thing I'm concerned about is, uh, if, if at some time, an officer would be out of commission for a long period of time, uh, the minimal effect on the dog, I mean, I have a possible, a problem with that. You know, it's a possibility the dog would not be able to be handled or controlled by a family member, that, we already had that happen once. We had a dog officer that, uh, he was away, and the dog ended up biting the wife and the daughter, and the township was held liable for that. So that's, that's something else we have to look at as far as the dog being uncontrolled by a handler in any amount of time.
Well, I, I think that would be a concern for any dog handler.
It can happen to anybody.
So not just this specific case. But this specific case is unique, as you relayed to us in the email. And I'm blocking on edge shelves here because.
Yeah, right, I, I, I know where you're going, and I pretty, I think I pretty well explained that, that it's a moot point. In your opinion, it's a moot point. I, I, unless you have a direct line to somebody further up the chain in the military, I, I, I mean, I don't know that everybody else might be comfortable with that.
Well, I mean, number four, is that what we're talking about? But Justin.
Don't say that, that would be a bit.
That can happen to any of the officers, as far as downtime, it could get hurt, their dog could sit there for whatever reason, so, whatever, I just don't understand, you know. I mean, I don't understand why it's in here.
He was put in here because it was wrong. He was raised today. That's the reason why it was wrong.
Okay, all right, thank you. Have you had a chance to discuss that with Officer Wardman?
I have, and I tried calling him today before the meeting, and, and he was on vacation today, he never returned my phone call, but, I mean, the more I think about it, and, I mean, yeah, it is a problem, but it can happen to anybody. I mean, it could happen to a work-related injury where the officer goes off. We have an officer right now that, uh, unfortunately, he's gonna be off six to eight months for a shoulder injury. If he would have been a K nine handler, we'd be in the exact same situation, unfortunately, he wasn't, but, I mean.
He'd be in the same situation as far as maintenance training.
Right, maintenance.
But he wouldn't be in the same situation as having, being around a dog and controlling the dog.
Correct, correct.
Kind of agree with, uh, Darryl, that you brought this up, I think, a while ago, about getting another K nine officer, and I appreciate Officer Wardman, but this great opportunity. Um, I just, I don't wanna rush, I mean, I, I want to advance toward where we're doing this, and, though, you know, we're discussing that, it's really a moot point to me, because any officer could get hurt at any time, in my opinion. Um, so, I mean, that's a moot point, but I, I, I would like some of the other issues to be addressed, and, I mean, to me, I, I know, it'd be nice to have one to serve him yesterday, um, but if we could get some of these issues addressed that were brought up tonight, maybe get it maybe, you know, next month, I don't think that would be the world's end.
No, I, I, I think, I think we're, we're dragging aside. I, I think at least it just, it just can't be addressed, it's resolved no later than the fifteenth of November, and we're missing an opportunity here. My opinion.
No, if they're addressed by then, we could vote on it, put them right on the field.
Or we could vote on it now, with, with, with the, the resolve by November fifteenth, then, then, then disrupt it.
Actually, November fifteenth is the next meeting.
And I don't, I don't feel Justin would have any problems with any of his items
that I brought in the agreement. I mean, I'm sure he understands, you know, where we would be coming from on some of that.
Only question I have for you, Dwayne, is, do the other K nine officers have the same requirements? Do you have to ask if we put on this dog? Yes or no? Yes or no? Yes or no, question?
No.
No. So.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait a minute, let me finish, and why are you putting stipulations on this one?
Well, because this dog's a different situation, the other dogs were bought for the township and put, they were already K-9 handlers. Okay, what I'm looking at, like number two, is the officer will not receive any reimbursement for costs prior to, what's to keep the officer from coming and saying, you know what? I spent all this time and this money on training, I feel that I should be reimbursed for that. So if we have it in writing right up front, we don't have that problem.
It's not an issue.
And I didn't think it would be.
Well, you know what, if we're asking these questions, we've got the officer question right here, let's ask.
Let's ask. And as far as the, yeah, come on up, Justin. As far as the, with the handler, as far as utilizing the trainer, I feel that all three dogs should be consistent with be trained with, by the same trainer. And trainer that the township uses should be able to, and not that I don't trust Justin's trainers or Justin's training ability in that, but I would bet for the liability will be to township, that.
With all due respect, I mean, Sergeant Bauer just got her dog with the Shallow Creek. Okay? She needs, I don't know if she certified, I can't remember the guy's name, but when she went through that, that dog went a three-lap train, through Napa Wada with all the master trainers. And I believe, like I said, 100%, that that dog was already trained by Shallow Creek. So when Sergeant Bauer went and acquired that dog, she went through two weeks of training to get her up to speed with that particular dog through Shallow Creek County.
Which is more or less what you just said.
Another, which is another master trainer through Napa Wada.
Okay.
So I went through training my narcotics, Jerry Lekowski, who's a Napa Wada master trainer, certified me in narcotics, and then Jerry Purcell, who's a master trainer, certified me in.
Yeah, I know, it's Purcell.
Yeah, so as long, Napa Wada is a nationally accredited organization, all of their standards are the same, okay? It doesn't matter who the master trainer is, everybody is certified by the same standard. So as far as Rocco being certified right now, for purpose, he's certified by Jay Lekowski, who's a Napa Wada master trainer, and Jerry Purcell, who's a master trainer. Like I said, Sergeant Bauer going through Shallow Creek, I apologize, I can't think of the guy's name offhand, but that's another master trainer, so I really think that it's really irrelevant. I mean, he has a, he has a Napa Wada certification, and he's certified in all aspects of what he needed to do to certify, so that's, that's. Talking about maintenance training.
Yes, the officer continued maintenance.
He's ready to go on the road right now, that's the point. He's certified, certifications are good for one year, he won't have to be certified until next year. And then if, you know, you want me to go through certification at that point, then that's fine. But at this point, it's, he's certified through Napa Wada.
Okay, so you're fine with the, as far as the purchase thing, you're fine with?
I believe the other, the other dogs, Sergeant Bauer, there were other dogs that Sergeant Bauer had owned previously, Bruce Keffer had owned his own dogs, I think, I believe two of them, Gary Burton owned Cheyenne, his one dog, and Bill Somme, one of his dogs. These dogs were leased to the township, okay? So they would pretty much be, and it was leased like for a dollar, like you said, so they'd pretty much be in the same situation. I mean, it's been a fast practice in the past, and that has occurred.
And there was an agreement written on it, at least, like the solicitor request?
Yes, sir, and I have no issue with that.
Okay, and you're fine with the, I mean, any training or out-of-office expenses you had prior to this, from you?
Yeah, it wasn't on the road at the time.
Okay. And you're fine with whoever the township uses for trainer, for maintenance trainer?
I mean, I'd like to stay with Jerry Purcell, that'd be my request. Because I've known Jerry for so long, that would be my request, but, you know, it is really. He's, I went through, you know, he certified me, he already knows Rocco, you know, I personally feel comfortable with going, but.
Okay, that's something that, you know, I don't think has a border commissioner, that's something for.
Be pretty right.
Right, so, look over. And as far as the food and the grooming, you know, being donated.
Well, I talked to Sergeant Bauer about that, and I guess, and I don't want to step on any toes, but I guess that with the, the structure is that I would just fall into the way they're doing it now. So I don't want to step on any toes there. However they're doing it, I'm perfectly fine.
Ryan, question? If we can get the dog up and running and get the car and everything in place before November fifteenth, can we, you know, include?
Yeah, my main concern right now is, like Justin just said, the dog is fully certified. All he needs is approval, put the dog on the road, and then he'll actually get the certificate, say that they're approved, and we'll put them on file. Yeah, if we can get the car ready and it's safe for the dog, I mean, because I don't want to be on the news somewhere where we have terrible access to the dog.
Yeah, I understand.
So, I mean, yeah.
Between you and Justin, how it works out, and it's.
We have, I already went to the road garage, and I found the two kennels down there, myself and Sergeant, or Spire Golf went down, we located, there were two, two dog kennels down there. So, I mean, originally, I only sold two, so. But the point is, there's two down there that are, that are able to be put into the Crown Vic to work. Like I talked to Lieutenant Mahinsky last week, I have no issue. I'm going to, I was raised, eggers can't be choosers, so it's Crown Vic, it's Crown Vic, whatever, so. The thing is, I mean, and I forget who said it, but as far as, you know, him being certified right now, he's sitting at home.
Where'd he go?
It's really.
Detrimental.
Driving me crazy at home, but.
He wants to go.
It's, why have him sit when he can be, be live right now? Just real quick, Matt Nero, who was the kid that friends with, who donated Rocco to me, he went back, his first day on the job, within two hours, and his dog Creed, he had a drug bust. His dog found dead bit of car, and then on that Thursday, he had a kid run from him, his dog tracked him, and the following week, his dog found a bunch of meth and heroin in the car. So, I mean, these dogs, just, and he went through the same training as me in the first two weeks on his, on duty with his dog, was already a tremendous success, so. I mean, that's something that, like I had said before, it's a good force multiplier for the township, and it was just an opportunity to, you know, have this presented, I just saw it as an opportunity to be passed on.
Speciality drug problem, we have locally, Westmore County.
Mr. Alexander, we've let, we've talked to Lieutenant Mahinsky, let him know what kind of contracts or signatures or agreements you need.
Absolutely, and if you guys have a sample that he used in the past, I'd be performing.
I'll give you one, and I'll give you the facts over to your office.
Great.
In regards to anything else, I am retiring after first thing here, with that, like I said, so. All right?
And I think we're finding the money for this other stuff we need.
I have twenty-six years and four doors, I'm done, so, that's it.
And thank you for saying that.
Retiring.
And, but I, if we're finding the money for this eighteen hundred dollars or whatever, we need to find the money for the hot pot too.
Oh, we will.
There's money.
There's money in the equipment, I can take it out, just a minor, but I still have money left.
I don't want to be on it. And this, you know, our dog was with the car, and the heat was left on while he was. Somebody out there.
So is it motion in order with Dwayne's conditions that Officer Wardman has agreed to?
Yes. Other than the maintenance.
Well, right, well, the ones that he agreed to.
And I would make it to the, so that, you know, one person can't get hung up on the other, to the mutual satisfaction of Lieutenant Mahinsky and Officer Wardman, that way you cover it.
I'm satisfied with everything that's been brought up, and me and Justin get together and decide where he's going to go for the training, for the maintenance training.
Well, you know, you comfortable with the other things, I mean, what else are you looking for?
Well, just as far as the purchase, and then as far as the, anything prior to this.
I think that's a question.
You have to agree to that.
Right, right.
And the dog food thing's off the table because they're going to go with their original SOP. And they're, Lieutenant and him's going to work as far as the handler. And that with, you know, you, him, and I'd say the other handlers. Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, with that, then, I'm going to make a motion that we bring Officer Wardman and K-9 Rocco along to the K-9 unit for the township in November, with the intent to have them on the road no later than fifteen November, Wednesday, as long as we can get everything in order by that point, and with all the conditions that, of the commissioner consideration, which I might be able to go through them all.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All figures, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, ahs, sevens, zeros.
We draw. Congratulations, Doc, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We brought him here.
Yeah, did you bring him here on the fifteenth?
I want to understand further word comment, do we have anything? Next time, announcements.
First announcement is the Fall Yard Waste Collection Program is scheduled on your regular day of garbage pickup during the weeks of October twenty-fourth, November seventh, and December fifth. Yard waste must be placed in five degradable paper bags. Second announcement is the Haunted Halloween Trail scheduled for Saturday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, at Indian Lake Park. The third announcement is residents are encouraged to sign up on the new township website for the Notify Me feature to receive township notifications, and just for clarification, this, we currently use Nixle, but we have this as a module in the new website, and we're probably going to need to switch over from Nixle to Notify Me, so we're trying to use both right now, and we need people to sign up for Notify Me with the idea that eventually we'll transition over to the Notify Me module.
Where does the notify me come from? Like, what initiates that broadcast?
Well, we have to, you have to sign up, and then.
No, I mean, the equipment itself, the service?
It's computer-based, I believe, and it's generated.
Through our web?
Yes, you are, that's correct.
Our website is generated by us, just like we do Nixle, we generate all those.
Right, yeah, and then from the, like, server side, where's the server, where's the?
It'll be us, it'll be, we'll be able to, we'll be able to access it through a computer, through the internet. As the internet base.
So we're simply, we're using both now, but Nixle's going to a paid service, and with this module that came with our base pack, the issue is simply, we don't want to send out notifications and nobody signed up for them, we're trying to transition slowly, and that's why I brought it up as an announcement, so Nixle.
Yeah, so.
No, Nixle.
They're signing up for the other.
We may have to do that, yes.
We need to do that. Motion, second.
Discussion. All figures, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, ahs, meeting adjourned at eight forty-two.
Yeah. Give us a loser, sir.